City Council meeting to order. Can the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Duggar.
Here.
Hartmeyer Prigg.
Here.
Hudson.
Here.
Kimmy.
Here.
Teeter.
Here.
Tivnan marking excused and Mayor Beatty.
Here. Okay, so we're gonna launch into our agenda. We're gonna start tonight with visitor comment. As a reminder, visitor comment is an essential part of local government and how we do business. However, to help us comply with open Oregon's open meeting laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, rather, this is a time for us to listen. If follow up is needed, we have our assistant city manager Dan and our recorder. Anyone here to address the council this evening?
No, Mayor.
All right. See none. Counsel items. Counselor Duggar.
Yeah, I have a couple of things. I just wanted to bring to all of your attention. You've probably received an email from a community member asking you to sign a letter. I wanted to kind of put that out there. That's really important to me. I've been working with this community member. And it is about asking for the governor to declare Oregon is essentially a sanctuary state, as you've seen other places do, for trans residents. So if you feel compelled to do so, I would encourage you to sign that by Monday end of day. The link is in your email. The second one I just want to put out there, because I missed doing this at the last meeting, but February eighteenth. I just want to put this out there because it was such an impactful thing, particularly as we go into budget conversations. Our Central Beaverton and Highland NAC put on a tree planting event. Pretty common, they do these things. Seventy-two people showed up to volunteer. It was the biggest volunteer event that I've ever been to, as far as just the neighborhood put it on. I was incredibly proud of them. Many of them are younger people, particularly at Beaverton High School. And the cool thing is these trees are going to require care for the next two years. So a lot of these volunteers were committed to work for free for their neighborhood for the next two years. It's an incredible project. And I just wanted to call out particularly Rachel Phillip from Central Beaverton and Reggie Brumkin from Highland and all the volunteers. I was incredibly happy to see that. And I just wanted to put that out in the public record that is is sometimes things feel dark, but that gave me a lot of hope and it gave me a lot of optimism. And that is it. Thanks, Mayor.
Counselor Hudson.
Yeah, thank you. I actually thought I'd just take a moment to recognize this council, but also our staff. In our last meeting, we proclaimed Muslim American Heritage Month, which is not something we've done in the past. The inclusion and the power that that community brought in that space, I think you all felt it in the moment. Some of our staff didn't, and I know staff helped quite a bit to help facilitate and coordinate that. So Dan, please make sure that staff knows how much I and our community really appreciated the work that they did to help make sure that made it to the finish line. Ramadan does start on Thursday FYI, so happy Ramadan.
Okay, any staff items, Dan?
Actually, yes, one, Mayor. And just a better late than never probably category announcement. Just wanted to, I guess verbally introduce you because I'm not sure he's on the meeting, but introduce our new public works director. It's an important position for the city and certainly one that's important for me because I was acting public works director and trying to do another role as well. So he's been with the city now about a month, but Tim Elsie is our new public works director. He came to the city from Skamania County in Washington. Has twenty-five years in public service, has an engineering background, also experience in emergency management, planning and and the like, but he's been spending his first almost month touring, learning lots and meeting a lot of our public work staff and and I think getting out into some of the other departments as well. So when you see him, please welcome him and that is it. Thank you.
Well, I'm glad you're down to one assistant city manager job and not assistant city manager and interim department head. So we look forward to that. Okay, no other staff meeting. Thanks for introducing him. Council president consent agenda, please.
Yes, Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have to give it to the loudest, so it's going to John. It's removed and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Are you waving your hand, Counselor Hudson? Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and I just, I am super excited that one of our boards and commissions is writing a letter to the Oregon legislature. I think that's really exciting. I did ask Counselor Duggar if you could just give us like a one to two minute on the process. Just for background, I don't know that we've identified a protocol or process for how if a border commission wants to write a letter, right? And I've I've seen different versions of what's happened in my last two years. I've seen some folks write letters on their own, and so I'm very supportive of this letter. But Counselor Duggar or Mayor, if you want to talk a little bit about helping other counselors understand how we could do this, and then also for the record for other boards and commission members, I think that'd be super helpful.
Yeah, I'll tell you from my perspective and Counselor Duggar can do his, this is not a normal course of action for a board to write to the legislature. It's something we we need to develop some criteria around because in this form of government, they're advisory to us. And so I've already asked the city manager, when I saw it hit the agenda, to come back. We need to, we need a process for council because while when they support letters and things that we support, that's really awesome. Where I think it could get tricky is if they try to submit a letter of opposition against something the council supported, which is again, speaking as an individual person on a board is different than the board speaking as a body. So this is abnormal. I'll say that. This isn't what we have. There's no prior practice to doing this, which is why you're probably asking questions because I have similar questions. It happens to be a topic I agree with and it happens to be on a subject I really care about. But again, we as the board have to make decisions based on worst case scenario sometimes too. So happy to support it today. I think it's timely. It's something we all support, but it's on the list of policies we need in the new form of government. Counselor Duggar?
Yeah, no, you you know that like that's that's what I told Counselor Hudson too is like in this case, I think it's it's it lines up, but but you know, just some clarity around the future, just so we don't run into those situations, I think is best. I do think there are some boards. We might need to bifurcate the policy because some are advisory to us and some aren't necessarily. So there might need to be a bifurcation there, but in general, completely agree.
I would say all boards are advisory to the council in this form of government. We might not call them advisory board, but none of them have independent decision making away from the council.
I guess I was thinking like some of the other boards, like the Startup Center Board and stuff like that, but probably aren't going to ask us for a letter, so never mind that one.
Well, they can write their old letters because we're not in charge of them, but all of our boards and commissions do report to us and do not have independent decision making authority away from the council. So Dan, please put that on your list of when the city manager says what happened to council yesterday as a reminder. The council needs a policy on this topic, particularly before we start getting more letters and it becomes a precedent. It's difficult for us to tell other people no. Does that answer your question, Counselor Hudson?
Yeah, I just want to make sure, right, if other boards want to, right, like we just want to be consistent. And I know that I know some boards I think have haven't and I don't want to go back, but I'd like to be future thinking. So thanks, Mayor.
Okay, any other discussion on on tonight's very lofty consent agenda? All right, see you then. Will the recorder call the roll?
Counselor Duggar.
Yep.
Hartmeyer Prigg.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Kimmy.
Yes.
Teeter.
Yes.
Tivnan. Excused, Mayor Beatty.
Yes. Okay, we are on to our presentations this evening. We have two. Metro update on Toallington Valley Highway Transit Project and Work Session, and I do believe we have Counselor Gonzalez and Counselor Rosenthal with us this evening. So the I don't know who you're gonna like arm wrestle over who talks first. If it's seniority Counselor Gonzalez, you can have the floor.
He won. He won the thumb wrestling.
He did, yeah, we we.
And the beard contest. Let's not, let's not leave that out.
Yeah, I mean, Counselor Rosenthal is working on it, though. You can tell, you know, he's going. All right, great. Well, Mayor and esteemed sitting counselors, we're very, very excited to be here to present an update on this project that has been underway for a few months now. I do have Jess Sadeb in the audience with us, who will be sharing the PowerPoint, to my understanding, so I'm hoping that we're able to do that. Awesome. All right. I love it when technology works. So as I was, as I was mentioning, and for the record, I will start off by saying that my name is Juan Carlos Gonzalez, and I am Metro Counselor for District Four, representing Northwest Washington County, and I'm joined by Metro Counselor Garrett Rosenthal, who represents the southern half of Washington County. So this is the last presentation on our roadshow, presenting to all of the boards that interact with this project with regards to our public agencies. Recently, we did present to the Washington Board, Washington County Board of Commissioners, got some really good feedback during their work session and excited to conclude here, last but not least, as they say. So we acknowledge that there's been a tremendous amount of work on this corridor for decades now. Reports, studies, tours, spot investments by ODOT, by the cities. And we, of course, want to applaud the city for a lot of that work as well to improve transportation safety and access along the stretch of the the center core of the city of Beaverton, that of course overlaps with TV Highway and Canyon Road, which Mayor Beatty enjoyed the 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 loop video during the during your State of the City. So the effort of this project is a is both, it's two parts, a transit study and an equitable development strategy. And it's focused on the on the very same thing that expanded across the our corridor with a goal to make it the next chapter of the region's urban mobility. The fifty-seven bus line, which is the bus line on TV Highway from Beaverton Central all the way to Forest Downtown Forest Grove, had the has the highest bus ridership in all of Washington County, and it also retained ridership during the pandemic. So proportionally, it 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 kept the highest amount of riders than any other line in the region. I hope that makes sense. It's a lot, it's all the the least drop off than any other bus line in the region. I'm jumbling myself up here, but so we know that this corridor is very in demand for multiple users. We know that it's a high crash corridor. It's very dangerous for people walking, many of who need access to transit. And of course, we're also focused on this project because TV TV Highway falls into one of Metro's equity focus areas, which is an overlay of the region on a whole bunch of different data points. And this focus area shows that we have a significantly higher percentage of people of color and low income residents that live alongside this corridor than most other places in the region. Again, your community leaders here, I think you know all this, but you know, for the sake of sharing for the broader public, this project is one that we feel very compelled to finally do some good work on, especially with with the federal bipartisan infrastructure law opportunity to to bring some federal dollars and to really activate this corridor once and for all with some transformative investment. So I'm going to pass it off to Counselor Rosenthal to walk you through some of the Metro 101 stuff.
Thank you, Counselor Gonzalez. Greetings to Mayor Beatty and the Beaverton City Council. It's a pleasure to be here to talk to you about this important project. You know, sadly, I have to say I have to complain because I get the railroad side of the of the highway. So that's it's a little unfair, but we're working it out. No, it it it's the project is good, as you know, it's a hope grant that we got for about a half a million to come up with it, to go through all the necessary steps, including a steering committee, a technical committee, and a lot of equity work to come up with a locally preferred alternative sometime this summer so that we can move forward and get more grant money. One of the things that you I'm sure you are aware of is that transportation planning and long range planning are part of, you know, Metro's, you know, sort of a tour de force, you might say. So we have the growth concept, the two twenty forty growth concept, which is currently undergoing review and and this is what the map shows here. As you know, things have changed since this was last done, so the twenty forty growth concept is it's subject to a whole bunch of changes. We've had the pandemic with different changes in habits. We've had, you know, sort of growth. We've had some problems with, you know, the center core. So there's a lot of different changes that are going on. Now we have inflation. There's always something to adapt to, but this is sort of what we call our pole star in terms of where we go with this. And then we use this to update the regional transportation plan, which has to be consistent with this. Trimed has submitted, well, as you know, that we just completed the request for RTP proposals for all the cities in the region, including the counties, and they've submitted their list. Trimed has included this. That's another submitter, has included the TV Highway on their near term constrained list of projects, which, as I'm sure you realize, it means this could be a tier one fundable at a fairly early stage if we can find the money and the pot of money to get it from. So it's a high priority. We're moving forward with the technical issues. We'll get into that in a little bit. I'll turn it back to Counselor Gonzalez.
All right, next slide. So I do like a good, a good map of timelines, as is any good public project. I'm sure you will appreciate. This shows the the project timeline. As I mentioned earlier, we have two major parts, the transit study, which will involve the referral and approval of an LPA and also a community driven and a community led equitable development strategy, which we're going to talk about a little bit later. The transit study work is anchored by members of our steering committee made up of partners like the county, ODOT, Trimed, local community leaders and advocates, business owners that gather to provide critical feedback and direction along the way. And of course, have to give a huge shout out to Council President Hurtmeyer Prigg for representing the city on the committee and also all of the city of Beaverton transportation and planning staff that I know track this project closely and invest a lot of staff time into into the analysis and the technical work. So huge appreciation to the city for its investment. A transformative project like the one that we're envisioning here can't happen unless we come together across jurisdictional boundaries. And that's why the steering committee member cooperation has been so important. It represents, the the members represent the different perspectives of each community along this very diverse corridor. And, you know, again, we're looking at a at a pretty big project that we want to do here. The steering committee has been meeting for a few months now, focusing on the planning and design stage with the end goal of coming up with an agreed upon LPA, which is a locally preferred alternative, and it's a document that identifies a few things. The mode, which in this case is bus alignment, where the bus service will be and general station locations. And then there's a whole bunch of other things that kind of go into that as well. So once approved by the steering committee, the LPA will then go through a series of reviews and approvals, including to your council before before heading to JPAC and Metro Council for inclusion in the regional transportation plan. So as you can see, we have a goal of later this fall getting a getting a an LPA adopted and approved. So next slide, please, gonna just go over some of the transit study goals. I haven't, we haven't necessarily mentioned this yet, but we, this project is in, I guess you could say like a pathway, a track where we are aiming to be competitive in what's called an FTA, Federal Transit Administration Small Starts Grant. And basically, all the most of the federal grants, as you know, there's formulas, there's just certain things that you need to do to make sure that you qualify. With the Small Starts Grant, we can build a project up to four hundred million dollars. And so I mean, it's a tremendous amount of resources and opportunity for for this corridor, just to continue to ground it there. Earlier in the process, partners on the steering committee identified the goals that you see on the screen. And we use these goals to guide all project decisions from big picture to the design details. And the purpose of the transit study is to very basically see how we can improve bus service and access to transit along the along TV Highway. We want to see much faster bus service so that it's more competitive than driving. We want transit to be a more efficient mode for those who already use it and more attractive to those who don't. We also want to improve people's experience at the bus stop to provide ease of access and safety enhancements. In our next slide, Counselor Rosenthal is going to cover some of those examples of of what's been envisioned so far.
Next slide. Yeah, this is an important slide. One of the things that I think it's important to mention, and we can conceive of the the ideal transit route that we have that we have. Unfortunately, we can't probably find enough money to fund all of it. So the problem with the LPA is going to be coming up with something that meets the biggest needs and the biggest equity goals and provides a higher level of service without maybe doing all the bells and whistles that we'd like, but we're going to look at it. We're looking at the technical. The the technical committee and our staff are looking at a lot of things such as shelters, the lighting, the seating, and elevated platforms are very important, particularly if you have some of the newer buses because people can load much quicker and from this elevated platform, bicycles and so forth, and that reduces the time at each stop. Reducing the time at each stop means a faster travel time. Transit priority, there are, we are looking at areas where we can have transit priority, where in other words, the signals are set so that the bus can just cruise through the signals. That's not probably going to be possible everywhere, but it's going to be possible someplace. It's sort of a complicated thing. In lane stops, there's a limitation on where we can do in lane stops. I believe it's about forty miles an hour. You can't do in lane stops at faster speed according to federal regulations. But of course, if you can do in lane stops, you save time because you don't have to wait for traffic to pull back out into the bus lane. Safer station access, and this is something that the equity community and equity discussions have identified particularly is getting to the getting to the station locations through a way that's lit and they and also that they feel comfortable at these stations, comfortable, safe and more or less secure and dry. Obviously, we have winters and people have to commute all year. Optimize stop spacing. We're going to look at that in terms of there are some. We have the data that says which stops are used the heaviest and which are not. Some of them may be combined with others, some may be omitted, some may be prioritized. But that's a technical study and we and and the staff is working on that. And finally, the fleet of new buses. It would be nice to do electric buses, the most ecologically effective, but it's not an easy decision. Electric buses, for example, have a limited range, and this is a sixteen and a half mile corridor. So there's a question of how far you could run these buses without having to charge, how many buses you might have have to have more buses. They're costly, et cetera, et cetera. So there's a lot of things that go into that. Anyhow, these are the features, and if you have questions on any of them, we'll try and answer or we'll turn it over to our staff who has a much clearer idea of what's going on in all of these aspects. I'll turn it back to Counselor Gonzalez.
Thanks, Counselor. Next slide, please. So as we know, this corridor has a lot of challenges, a few of them on the slide there. I won't go into detail to too many of them. But, you know, one of the things that I do want to highlight is that this corridor is very long and very different. It should be in terms of when it goes through Loa, when it goes through Hillsborough. And the reason that's important to acknowledge is because from what we are aware at the national lever level, this project is going to be probably the longest or among the longest BRT projects proposed through this grant. So that prepare, you know, that presents opportunities, it presents challenges, but something that we are really mindful of. And of course, most of this road is owned by ODOT. And so it's really important that we're working closely with them and that they also have skin in the game and feel committed to this project. So all those things we are working on. Something that wasn't necessarily on this slide too is, you know, our steering committee, we have recently began talking about the trade offs of different scenarios. And there's a few things that are continuing to rise in that really, to me, what's becoming clear and what is important to me is that all of the corridor gets some investment. Some of the scenarios that we've studied bifurcate or or separate the project or phase the project. And then there is also some scenarios which keep an integrated project, and I'm just one voice of many, but we are continuing to assess a lot of different of the trade offs that we need to make. Next slide. So we're getting into wrap up. We want to talk a little bit about the equitable development strategy. The equitable development strategy is, like I mentioned earlier, is fully community led with Metro and support and in support by Unite Oregon. We've also partnered with several CBOs, local leaders that comprise the TV Highway Equity Coalition. The coalition is tasked with working to prevent displacement of residents and businesses as a result of the increased land value from this investment. And also, the the coalition is working on to identify strategies for affordable housing, education, economic prosperity, a lot of other things. And, you know, we'll go to the next slide and we'll wrap up here really to more than anything, thank you for scheduling us for today. And we appreciate you being a champion for this project. And we we has been very important to both Counselor Rosenthal and myself that because all of our jurisdictions need to come together to make this project a reality, that we want to be very engaged with you. So we welcome any questions or comments that you have. And again, this is a really big project that has a long horizon and timeline, but we gotta, we gotta plant the seeds now.
Awesome. Well, thank you to our council president for being the liaison to this committee. I know it's been a lot of work and a lot of meetings because I've been I track it and look at what you guys are doing along the way. I have good news for Counselor Rosenthal when it comes to the rail line. As part of our our loop project, we are definitely looking at Quiet Zones, which is a project the city's been working on for quite some time to create safety in those intersections so people could cross them safely onto the other side. So I look forward to your support and most importantly, Metro's money. Because I think we can all agree, getting from the south side of the tracks to where your parking benches are going to be along this corridor incredibly important. That has been an ongoing city council priority for some time because crossing two state highways and a federal rail line is no, no safety measure. I I am interested in long term of looking at the data of like stops where people are getting on and off. Because this is an east-west transit line and our population lives north and south of it. And so how is our community accessing to get there? Or is it people coming from Portland to work in Hillsborough? Is it people going two or three stops? You know, for us, we've had ongoing struggle with getting adequate bike or adequate bus stops going north and south to get to the MAX line. There's no parking, and so people have to come on the MAX or or to the bus to get up to where you guys are coming in this rapid bus transit line. And, you know, of course, we need service to our fastest growing part of the city, which is South Cooper Mountain, to be able to access some of this prosperity that we're working on along together. But, you know, Beaverton is bold in our thinking, both in our policy writing and the projects we go. And so you know, we're in it with you guys. We just want to make sure that our community is getting access when we do an investment of this size. And so I think along the way, I'd be interested in that data. Counselor Hudson?
Yeah, thank you so much for this presentation, counselors. I will make just a just a comment, and if you feel inclined to respond, you're welcome to do so. I think this is really important work and really great. One of the things that I think about a lot is about personal safety and safety for people that ride these these modes of transportation. And so, you know, several years ago, on our very own MAX, there was really just a horrific incident with with teenagers that were on there. And so I hope as we're thinking about this and building this, that we are thinking about what safety for communities who ride transit looks like. I've sat on a couple of different presentations from Trimed where there's been just differing conversations around like what what do we make, what what happens as we evolve these to ensure safety? And I just want to sorry, are you throwing up? Okay, I just want to make sure that we're thoughtful about that. I will. Thank you. Go ahead and comment.
Thanks. Mayor and counselor, just want to acknowledge the that's the work that our Equity Coalition and and different technical groups are doing with community engagement. Yeah, I mean, safety is very important. And Mayor, to your question and comment earlier, we have so much data. I don't even know what to do with it. I'm happy to put it on a CSV sheet and send it over. But in all seriousness, we have, we there are a lot of really great presentations that I know we can make available or more easily available to you or to your project staff that are working on it. Just let me know and I'd be more than happy to help get that to you.
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure as the mayor of Beaverton and not the regional mayor of the west side, that my community members have access to prosperity when we do massive expansions like this, and it's challenging where our population is versus to what this road is doing. So So any, any data around that from your team? I know you can't answer it today. I am definitely interested in seeing that. And thank you for muting, Counselor Hassan, because um, we appreciate that.
Mayor, if I might make a comment, a- as you know, that uh, Trimat is going through a reevaluation of their service links uh, in the future. That's not part of the study, but they are planning uh, some better service and some links. One of the things that we have considered is that if we bring this uh, sort of the progress in this study to you again, to the council sometime later in the year. That we would invite uh, ODOT, I mean, I mean, Trimat to come along with us and to talk about uh, the connections in the north-south links. And improvements of that aspect.
Thank you. Uh, and I just want to point out, all of us live north or south of this line, because I know where each and every single one of you live. Counselor Duggar.
Uh, Counselors, good to see you. I really appreciate you being here. Uh, I think this aligns really well with our downtown equity strategy. If you're not familiar, go ahead and Google that. I think you'll, you'll find a lot of really good stuff there. But I don't have a question for you, and I don't expect an answer today, just because uh, this has been living in my head for the last few months. I met a mother, um, actually probably close to a year now, who had an autistic son. Uh, that she avoided transit, avoided events and, and I was kind of Googling around in preparation for this. And there's some work on school buses and like making them more accessible for people with autism, uh, you know, lowering triggers and things like that. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for us with this line to do something special or do something really inclusive for people with autism or neurodiversity. Uh, uh, spectrum disorder, you know, a- a- all the various things. I think there might be an opportunity for us to do something special here. So I guess uh, maybe less of a question, but more of a comment like, like. If, if that's not on your agenda, I would really love to keep talking about that and maybe get it in front of uh, some of your folks with more knowledge than myself. I think it's, it's really important for us to make transit for everyone. I'm, I'm, I know you're all aligned with that, but it's just been in my head a lot lately. So uh, just something I've been thinking about.
Counselor Duggar, thank you. Uh, we do have, like I mentioned, we do have um, a lot of metro staff. And actually, through the attendees, we have some uh, Trimat planners here as well, who I know will be taking good notes of that. And uh, uh, including that in some follow-up steps. So thank you for, for elevating that um, and access to something that is very important on this project. So I, I appreciate that.
And I think all elected officials are often terrible at taking credit for things. But uh, Counselor Gonzalez was the liaison to the zoo when the zoo made it a massive investment in uh, sensory zones for young people at the zoo. So I do think, I know for sure that Counselor Gonzalez, this is an important topic to him. He helped with that. Counselor Teeter.
Yes, thank you both for coming to share an update. Um, I'm a huge fan of bus rapid transit in general, and I think this corridor definitely needs it. And so with that context, I hear a lot of comments from people who are talking about regional projects that we're often working on. And one of the, one of the perspectives that they often bring up is, is the financial perspective, how it's funded. Um, I know you mentioned the Small Starts Grant, the four hundred million dollar number was thrown out. Um, can you talk a little bit about how much the project costs? Is Metro funding it? How much is coming from grants outside of the, outside of the region? Just touch on it a little bit.
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks. Thanks, Counselor. And Counselor Rosenthal, I know that you know uh, a lot of the mechanics of it as well. Right now, we're grant funded to do this one year kind of pre-study. I mean, if you look at a project from zero to one hundred percent, one hundred percent being fully built, you know, especially with big projects like this. You go to the ten percent, thirty percent design, you know, you go to construction and things like that. This project is, this, this planning study is getting us somewhere between zero to five percent. Um, and this next phase of the RTP, we would be going into project development in which. Um, you know, we uh, we, we've asked uh, uh, government agencies to um, put the project on their constrained list. And therefore, you know, we're, we're working on securing that match to get us, you know, that twenty million dollars to get us even closer to that. But you know, at the end of the day, the, there are some mechanics on the funding um, for the four hundred million dollar project. There's a lot of different kind of rules and expectations. So the rule is that the project needs to, like, it can be capped at that. Uh, it has to be capped at four hundred million dollars, and then the most that the FTA will put in is a hundred fifty million. The rest, you know, we, we have a local funding strategy that we will need to come up with as a region. And so I know that, I mean, right now, we're in um, in a pretty fiscally constrained time with our economy locally. I mean, this project wouldn't start for construction for years and years in ahead. So you know, uh, obviously hopeful that the economy will be, it will be better um, in the future, right? But um, I, I do feel very confident that we'll be able to piece together the funding uh, to get this project done, just to kind of get to that. Core, course, core sentiment there. Um, you know, when we look at other major corridors that have a lot of community energy and a lot of community support. I look at what has happened at eight, on Eighty Second Avenue, you know, they've secured a tremendous amount of, of money directly from the legislature. Um, and from their local government partners. I, I know that the, that the funding situation is different in Portland and Monuma County. But you know, I'd be, you know, why, why, why can't this corridor that's incredibly important to our county? Get a direct allocation, a hundred million dollars or more from the state legislature. ODOT owns the corridor. We're spending billions of dollars on these highway mega projects. Surely we can put, you know, a few, a few tens of millions. And then from there, I mean, like, you know, I, I, I'm just putting my own strategy out there. But um, uh, it's, it's something that I, I just think that we have a really great incentive with those federal dollars. So I, I hope that answers your question. I know that you track these, these grants really closely too, and I know you're really passionate um, about these projects. So I hope it's, I hope it's kind of helpful to, to like open my mo- my thought process there.
Yeah, yeah, it is. And, and I want to, I want to be able to fight for this and explain it to people and get them on board too. So I'm just looking forward to being more in the loop and catching up and, and helping out where I can.
I do appreciate that very political moment of us asking how you were going to fund it to Juan, talking about how we were going to fund it. So I don't want that to eclipse here, so go ahead, Garrett.
Yeah, well, I just want to add one thing. As, as he said, there's, the, the federal funds under the Small Starts Grant is about a hundred and fifty. That means there's going to be a lot of creativity and commitment to come up with the two hundred and fifty. And a full treatment, the preliminary estimate is that it could cost a significant amount more than the four hundred million to do the entire line. The, the way that we would like to. So um, it's going to require putting everybody together and coming up with ideas such as getting legislative funding to actually. Put the pieces together. So it's going to take some work and commitment.
Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselors Gonzalez and Rosenthal. Um, I just want to chime in a little bit because I have had the honor of serving on the steering committee. Um, and I asked Counselor Gonzalez, uh, you know, if the question came up about funding to share his optimism. Because um, I know we actually met um, on the ninth. And we talked about a bunch of different scenarios and what could this project look like? And like, I remember going into that meeting just feeling like, how will we ever make this happen? And it closed with Counselor Gonzalez kind of talking about all the options and all of the optimism that he holds. And it was really helpful for me because like this is such a pivotal project for our community. Um, I will say like, it feels like we're at this kind of moment of kind of, what is the scope going to land at? Because like, there's a safety project, there's a transit project, right? There's a lot of different things that are involved there and a lot of different needs that our community needs us to meet. So I'm excited about um, the different options that the committee, the steering committee is considering. Um, but the price tag is real. And we definitely, as um, the various municipalities were represented on that, on that call, expressed some concern about the funding. Um, but it, it, you know. Counselor Gonzalez kind of reminded us of like, don't let that be the thing that stops us, right? Like, how long has our community asked us for this? And so for us to get through this planning phase with this Hope Grant, um, is really going to then help us have that foundational plan for the next steps. And so I'm really hopeful for what it can be. Um, and we also tell lots of fun stories about our experiences with TV Highway. If you ever want to watch our icebreakers, everyone tells their connections to TV Highway, which is kind of funny. So um, yeah, I, it's been, and, and I bring all of uh, the things that we talk about as this body with me. Um, I think in my very first meeting, I brought up the downtown equity study with the steering committee. Because to me, it was such a beautiful kind of blueprint. And I would say that what um, the metro group has done with the equitable development strategy is. As good as ours, if not better, like it's, it's really amazing to see the way that they have reached the breadth of such a large community. And making sure that everything we do through this project is really taking care of our community in the best way. So um, I just want to share that too. I, I appreciate that, Mayor, about, you know, sometimes folks don't like to share the, the strengths or whatever. But um, Counselors Rosenthal and Gonzalez really are working hard on behalf of, of our whole community on this too.
Counselor Kimmy.
Yeah, um, it's great to see uh, both of you. I just realized I'm the only guy without a beard in this. I better, I better work on it. I wanted to say is um, I grew up in Korea and I used to ride um, uh, buses. And um, and then subways all the time since I was grade school. Uh, but, but since I moved to uh, immigrate to the United States for the last probably thirty years. I think I rode less than ten times. I was just thinking why? And I think it's just sense of like maybe unsafe and not familiar because I never rode buses here um, unless I'm forced to. So I, maybe this is not the forum, uh, but I just want to mention that, that as, as the Council Hassan said. That maybe there's a safety that people are concerned. And also, we just don't raise our kids to use public trans- transportation. Uh, we always um, keep them rides and they're used to driving cars since, since they're teenage, teenager. Uh, and we are not even right, um, used to ride bicycles on the road because it's so dangerous. So I think maybe in the future, in our conversation, that the safety. And also, how can we encourage young people to use the public, public transportation? And maybe one day we can all gather uh, with our beards and, and go ride a public transit together and see how it will all feel like. And that's all the co- comment and glad to see you all. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor.
Okay, uh, well, thank you for joining us uh, this evening. And I think what you know about the city council, my colleagues and I, is that we understand that um, to accomplish big things, we have to work together. Um, and it takes every level of government to do some of this work and this project and this corridor um, is no different. So thank you, um, Council President for serving. Thanks you guys for your vision. We look forward to, to coming back. I just want to, you know, tell you as somebody that gets money for the city, I know how hard it is, but the first start is a plan and jurisdictional partnership. So that's what we're working on now and we'll work together, I hope, in the future to bring money home. Anything you need from us, gentlemen?
No, just a thumbs up. You feel uh, you feel involved and informed and that, you know, you want us to come back. Great, all right. You know, I'm going to keep adding conditions to that thumbs up.
That was not an open invitation because I'm the one watching what you're saying and everyone else is like, oh, you sound so great. You're right. Like, what can we do? And I'm like, wait a minute, like, we and me are different. So I appreciate that. And please text Counselor Edward at least a month in advance next time you're coming, so he can um, grow a beard.
All right, you got it. I'm sending the reminder.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Alrighty. All right, we are on to our next uh, agenda bill, um, our last presentation of the evening. Agenda Bill two, three, zero, seven, four, Library Advisory Board, uh, annual report to the city council. I know we have the Chair, Andrew Love, and our Library Director, Glenn. So feel free to introduce anyone else that's here with you tonight, and there you go. And Glenn has a beard. I don't know about Andrew. We haven't seen him yet, so we'll figure that out in a second here.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Um, Glenn Ferdman, Beaverton City Library Director and liaison to the Library Advisory Board. I'm very happy to be here this evening and I'm so glad that I chose to wear my beard. Um, it's my distinct honor and privilege to introduce Andrew Love, the Chair of the Library Advisory Board. Who will be presenting the group's annual report. So with that, Andrew, take it away, please.
Sure, and I do not have a beard, so I'm feeling a little underdressed, but I guess that's just the way it works sometimes. So I should be sharing my uh, presentation. Hopefully that's coming through.
Good to go, Andrew.
So uh, this. It's good? All right. Uh, so our, uh, this is our annual report to the city council. It actually covers uh, the past couple of years since we haven't had a chance to give it to you guys uh, due to the pandemic. So uh, some of our activities as a board is uh, our monthly meetings, reviewing library policies, comments to the library. Any statistics that are going on, uh, monitoring the activities of the Teen Library Council, the Friends and the Foundation. Uh, discussing library trends, uh, writing some letters to you at the city council and then reviewing the library budget. A couple of things that have been going on at the library, uh, you may be aware of already. Uh, in May, uh, we opened the uh, Maker Space and it's been pretty popular. Um, and then in August, opened the Grab and Go at Beaverton Transit Center. Uh, and definitely some of you have been for both of those openings. I believe both have been uh, highly regarded so far as I'm aware. Um, the Maker Space especially for just how much cool stuff you can do. Uh, in addition, we've been having the One Book on Beaverton. Uh, here's the last four years since we haven't really presented lately. We've had authors come to visit. We've had a bunch of events. And uh, there's definitely been giveaways of all these books so that everyone in Beaverton can have uh, read these books and uh, have a common ground to talk about it. Uh, some of the COVID adaptations that we had uh, going on. Uh, there were outdoor book collections at the library, uh, drive up, walk up, book pickup. Uh, some, a bunch of online programs, online storytimes, things like that, e- extending wifi to outside the buildings so people could actually get internet. And then uh, the Beaverton Library was the first library in the county to reopen to the public in January of twenty twenty one. Uh, here's just some circulation numbers for the library. You can see our, our physical circulation drop due to the pandemic, but it's on its way back up. And uh, our e-content has been doing pretty good just based on uh, everybody checking out ebooks. Some of our regular business is us writing letters to the uh, to you. Uh, it's been overcome by events, but supporting the South Cooper Mountain Library, uh, and then looking at the library budget. Uh, as well as actual our review of the library budget. Uh, one big thing that's happened is that Washington County has gone fine-free. So there are no fines uh, associated with uh, late fees or anything like that. Uh, we've also done some policy reviews of the library, uh, helping to update these, these policies. Uh, the library has a equity uh, board that they've been going through and, and helping as well to update all these policies. And then we help to review as well. So rules for you, safe child, children areas, teen areas, and then the public computer, internet and wifi use policies. Uh, at the library. A couple of updates at the Beaverton Library itself. There's been four new study cubes opened uh, on the top floor. Uh, you can make your reservations online or on-site, uh, free to the public. Um, new public service desks are coming in sometime in the, this year. Uh, then the library as a warming and cooling center, as well as expanding the Library of Things collection. Uh, which has wifi hotspots, board games, tents, musical instruments, GoPros, among many other cool items that you can check out from the library. Should try it out sometime. Uh, the library also helped and we helped to put together the library strategic plan. Uh, we helped the library put it together. Uh, new mission statement, uh, vision statement. This is the first time the library has had a vision statement. So the vision of the library is that it is the foundation for an engaged and thriving community. Uh, the new, the values that the library wants to hold and then what the goal of the library is, is strategic directive. Uh, there's been some library outreach. There's a new bookmobile coming sometime uh, early this year. It's been grant funded for, I believe, a year. And uh, it's on backorder, but when it comes in, we'll, we'll have an actual bookmobile driving around, able to reach areas that might not be able to get to the library. Uh, there's also been a fifty thousand free book giveaway, um, adult focused, adult focused outreach specialists. And then working with THPRD, there's four new community libraries at local parks. So uh, able to get to libraries even if you aren't near uh, Beaverton Library or Murray Shoals. So I tried to keep it quick, but any questions? about the library or the Library Advisory Board?
Awesome. Uh, well, I'll I'll kick this off and just say that, you know, the the two best elected officials cut the ribbon on all the rad rad library stuff this year, and that was Counselor Hassan and I. So don't be jealous to the rest of the council, but uh we'll be in those photos for time in memoriam about what we did there. Um, I want to thank you guys. I think the library is something we brag quite a bit about from the City Council uh level and uh thanks to Gwen or Glenn for pushing us always to think outside the box to do other cool things at the library. Counselor Hassan?
It's true. That was the best two elected leaders. Um, I don't have any comments or questions. Uh, I do just want to um something for the council to be thinking about. I just started serving on the Library Advisory Board. One of the functions of serving on that board is we review uh visitor comments and and talk about what the community is saying. And so, you know, as we move into what boards and commissions like start to evolve and look like in the future is, you know, looking at at what the Library Advisory Board does to help us to help advise a library, like what, how does that look like in other parts of the city? So just kind of wanted to use that moment to like prime you all to think about what that looks like in the future. I think it's um I have not been the best library advisory for liaison. I haven't been able to make all the meetings, but I think it's so important when they're actually taking the time to review what people are saying and potentially using that information to inform what they do. I just, I think that that is, you know, that is community engagement and response at its finest. And so, you know, as we think about what we want the future of fourth and commissions to continue to look like, this is a really great example of that. So uh, thank you, Glenn, and thank you, Andrew, for taking this time to come give us this presentation.
Yeah, I think when I was the liaison, when I was the City Councilor to the library, my favorite thing was visitor comments and not always because they were kind, but we need to start like a mean tweet page for some of the comments we get as well. Uh, Counselor President?
We can start each meeting reading those, the mean tweets. Um, yeah, thank you, Andrew. Um, it's it's kind of, I mean, it's amazing that you captured like three gears in that summary. But what's so cool to see is, I mean, like, our world has changed because of this pandemic. And the library was really one of the big ones that just had to adapt to every single challenge that was coming. And so thank you for serving on this board during such a hard time and creating access to something that is so critical in our community. I got to go to um the Bold Program on Saturday. They were meeting in the Kathy Stanton Room and I arrived just after they were doing an activity about their favorite places in Beaverton. And there was five different groups, I think, and every single group, the only thing that was common was the library on all five. And I I kind of made the comment that the library feels like it's Beaverton's living room, right? It's such a welcoming place for our community. And so I just want to thank you for for being part of that group during a time that was so challenging, that still is challenging, right? The library faces a lot of unique challenges in our community and continues to show up and serve our community. So thank you for being adaptable and helping advise our library through that hard time and, you know, um, being responsive to what our community needed it to be um then and always.
I do think we need to add to our future City Council rulemaking uh process. We have all referred to Beaverton's Living Room as a different place within the city this year. I mean, at least, I mean, we've talked about it being outside City Hall. We've talked about it being the Reaser. We've talked about the library. We talked about being the Fountain. So um I look forward to a healthy debate with the rest of the council on what Beaverton's Living Room is, because I do think we need some definition there. Counselor Kimmy.
Yeah, thank you, um, Andrew and Glenn uh for wonderful presentation. Uh, one quick question is when in your what do you include the Murray and Shoals Library altogether when you do presentation?
Yes, the Murray Shoals and the Beaverton Library are uh they're both uh advised by the same group.
Okay. So uh just a quick question is that the how well you rely, how well the uh Murray Shoals uh library utilized compared to the central location?
So I'll I'll take that, Andrew. Thank you, Counselor Kimmy. So the um the branch uh utilization is approximately, it it's certainly less than um than the main library considerably less because the the difference, for example, in terms of the square footage, main library is about sixty seven thousand square feet and the branch is twelve thousand. So there's um the collection sizes are considerably uh lower. We also, we don't have any um meeting rooms, meeting spaces at the Branch Library. Um, we don't have a dedicated children's or sorry, um uh we do have a dedicated children's area. We we have a a teen area. It's it's designated, but it's not, it's not a separate area. So it's it is limited in terms of the services. It was never meant to to replicate all the services at the main, but be in addition to and provide some basic services. Doesn't have the same amount of programming. It doesn't circulate as many items. But that said, um, our programming, the um is uh the response to the programming of late has been um has increased significantly. In fact, some of our recent storytimes have attracted more than sixty participants, which is, I think, record breaking numbers. So the branch is very um well loved by members of the uh southern part of the city. Although, um, again, because of its size, whether that be the footprint, the collection size, et cetera, uh is a lot less compared to Maine.
Well, thank you for that, because I I probably expect that uh because of the development of South Cooper Mountain and that area, it's gonna be very well utilized maybe in the future. And as somebody um who I I, one thing I really appreciate about libraries that they provide, you guys provide the tickets to like the Japanese garden, Chinese garden and all these uh art museums. And as somebody who has utilized that, I really appreciate it. Maybe you can develop that a little more where um the general public can get a free ticket to all these venues and and um places that's quite expensive, I should say, uh as an adult and taking children. So maybe you can provide that a little more. Thank you so much for all your work.
Yeah, thank you for the suggestion, Counselor Kimmy. That cultural pass program that you're referencing is very popular. That's actually a countywide initiative. And so, but I'd be happy to pass along your your comments and suggestions to the Washington County Cooperative Library Services to see if there's a way we might increase that program and add some additional cultural attractions.
Counselor Ducker.
I think we also should mention that the library is, I think, in our other uh presentation, it's the anchor for the the or an anchor for the loop. I know, maybe you're probably tired of talking about the loop. But uh, so it's a living room and an anchor. Uh, that's not my question though. Uh, Glenn, Andrew, thank you. Thank you and any of your staff that contributed to this. This is super informational. Um, libraries have always been an incredibly radical idea to me, one that likely would not pass right now, right? Like this idea where information is free and it's a place for the community to go and and money isn't a limiting factor to information or knowledge. You can borrow things. Uh, you trust community members there. It's kind of a radical idea. I love it. But let's let's uh, I want to move to challenge you all a little bit here because we are entering a a a place, Glenn, I'm sure you know this, where the fiscal situation isn't great and it's and it's likely gonna get worse in the short term. So with funding challenges existing, uh already existing and likely possibly increasing in the future, and you don't have to answer this question tonight, I'm just putting this out there. Like, how can we push this radical idea even further, right? How can we create even more valuable or value for our community members in ways that we haven't quite examined? I love the idea of the study rooms you've done. This is kind of what I'm thinking about, like the meeting space. The idea of a library as a cooling center, right? Like, that is not in your core business, but it's it's brilliant because it creates additional value without adding a massive amount of cost. I think partnering with with organizations like Pride Beaverton to do the drag storytime was a brilliant success. I I just love the idea. And I'm gonna challenge you all to keep thinking about these things and keep innovating in this area because you guys are, it's a really interesting time for libraries because there aren't many public institutions where it's where would that have your operating model, but it just shows the value, right? Of a library to a community. I couldn't be couldn't be more proud of you all. So less of a question, but more of a challenge. Let's keep pushing the needle on those value things. I think it's really important. Uh, particularly as we see income inequality, resource inequality, all of that stuff. But with the library, everyone's equal.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Doug. You should know, by the way, the library executive team has been hard at work in um looking at a variety of scenarios to address some of the uh concerns that you raised from both a fiscal standpoint and getting the most bang for um uh for the community's buck, so to speak. And we're using an equity lens in addition to council priorities to um to be our um our guiding star in that uh in that process. And we will continue to uh push uh and advance that work and and um continue to try to innovate and do ways in which to um maximize services on behalf of residents and and continue to do so in a fiscally responsible way. So thank you for the challenge, throwing down the gauntlet. Gladly accepted.
I love it. The other thing I'll add and then I'll shut up because it's getting late. Uh, I know I live in front of the Beaverton Lodge. I have a lot of senior neighbors. Uh, they consistently, there's book clubs that happen there that there's, you know, just all around the neighborhood. I see it. I see people sitting on benches, reading books that they got from the Beaverton Library. So I just want to put that out there too, because I hope you all know that like your impact not only is in the in in your building, but it's it's creating like connections between neighbors all over the city. And I think it's incredibly impactful.
Appreciate that. I want to give a shout out to my liaison colleague, Beth Gilbert, who is the liaison. She's a member of the library staff and also services the liaison to the Committee on Aging.
Perfect. Thank you all.
All right. Well, that, thank you, Counselor Duggar, for wrapping us up. And what we all know, the Beaverton Library is rad and people check out lots of books. We um like our Drag Queen Story Hour and we're not banning books here like other parts of the country. So uh, thank you, gentlemen, for taking some time tonight to talk about the library. And uh we look forward to your report next year.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Counselors. Thank you, Andrew.
All right. Last item on the council agenda tonight, uh any council new business? All right. Counselor President.
I just want to say um thank you for all of your understanding um that I missed our meeting in March. Um I almost always I'm gonna, you know, prioritize counsel, but today, that day I had to prioritize myself. So thank you for your understanding. Um, it felt weird to to miss a meeting like that. So thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for the support.
Awesome. All right. Well, that's the end of our meeting tonight. See you everyone.